Meeting for July twelve, two thousand twenty-three. Six thirty-two or alphabetical roll call.
Clark Brewer here.
I'm Callahan here.
Kevin Hine here.
Gerda Hobson here.
And Cassandra Thayer, and I don't know, we have anybody else out in Never Never Land? No. Okay, um, we have nothing on our agenda. Uh, looking ahead, I'm told by Cassandra, we may have an A and R for a meeting on the twenty-sixth. If we do not. I will say we'll cancel that meeting. And right now, our solo meeting in August is clear, but uh.
It's not anymore.
It's not anymore. Oh, well.
No, sorry, you have two applications for the August meeting.
Okay, and then, uh. You know, again, the, the reason for this meeting is to not bunch everything up just before town meeting and. You guys in the loop of what's going on, so. Um, I'm gonna share a screen, or where is it? Share the screen. I don't, does everybody see what the judge, uh, that Cassandra distributed from the judge?
Is that updated from last night?
Now, this is what she gave to us two weeks of is last night, she didn't have any additional updated materials, but. Um, s- so that you know, everybody else, the bylaw committee has looked at this document now twice. We've gone over some. Specific questions about specific uses that have just gone to our attention and. At our next meeting on the thirty-first, she should have the first iteration of what the new table would look like. But, um, what I just wanted to bring you up to speed on in the general sense is. You know, we're following the principle that the bylaw committee has been for some time is to make Article Four. Uh, simpler, at least the table will be simpler. It won't have any, an extreme laundry list of uses and. Be nitpicky as to what is and what isn't allowed. It's more broken up into a broader category uses. Um. The judge thought we needed to make clear distinctions between the primary uses. And accessory uses, and that's what her draft does. Um, and then, you know, she had some questions for us on specific uses. Do we want to do this? Do we want to do that? I mean, generally speaking. We're looking to carry over existing uses. We, we have to add some solar things to Article Four. Um, we still have to make some decisions about multi-families in the residential districts, whether to allow that or not. We have some survey issues out there, mostly about. Accelery, accessory dwellings, which will be moved into Article Four. You know, the rest of Article Four, that, you know, from its existing, it has a whole prohibition against toxic uses and. A bunch of things. All of that's gonna carry over.
Toxic uses like, like noise, vibration.
Is vibration. We were talking about limits about that in the last two bylaw committee meetings. Um, so a lot of Article Four will carry over, and it will be in the table that we don't have the new draft yet. That, um, we were gonna see some simplification of it. But even in this outline of the text itself. The, the, the approach of going into broad categories of uses rather than. N- nitpicking list is, is being followed, and then also, like I said, to break it up between. Primary uses on a site and accessory uses that are allowed on the site. So, um. I, you know, I guess I would, I'd just like to, for the rest of you, you know, if you have any specific questions to the extent you took a look at this. Or, you know, any general questions about the approach we're taking. Um. You know, and, and just so you know, Article Four will go forward in the fall. It will generate, uh, housekeeping changes in Article Five, which is the area regulations, and. That is because of changes in terminology. It may generate some definition changes in Article Two. Uh, we will probably consolidate. Uh, I think it's fifteen, which is accessory dwelling into this one. We might consolidate, consolidate eighteen, which is the village bylaw uses into this one, so the uses are all in one place. Um, the substance of Article Five, if we make any changes to dimensions, that's coming in the spring. So it'll be Article Four and housekeeping is the big focus for the fall. There's other things we're dealing with too, which I'll bring you up to speed on, but when, when it's appropriate, when we have things ready. So, uh.
There's, there's nothing in what, what the judge put together. That's, uh, operative. It, it's really a simplification and clarification. I don't think she was trying to make any changes that would affect, um, anything that's existing. In terms of what's allowed and what's not allowed now.
Yeah.
Bring up, um, hey, should we change the inclusionary, uh, zoning requirement? The judge said, hey, you gotta, in- inclusionary zoning in- includes a subdivision. With, with five, uh, lots or not. How does that really work? I mean, if they're doing a subdivision for five lots, how do you reserve a, a, a dwelling unit? Uh, to be on the S H I or a subdivision? That's something that.
It's easy.
To be investigated?
Well, it's fairly easy, but, uh.
Well, the judge asked the question, um, I understand there, there are ways to, you know, you can keep lots. Instead of release lots, you, you reserve the lots. Um, and, and then that's probably a, a case where the, where a developer, instead of. Reserving two lots for affordability. And, and, and not building two and a half million dollar houses, they would want to try and. Have inclusionary zone in units elsewhere.
Right.
Or use the, um, the monetary.
Right, so.
Which Tom says he doesn't like the monetary option and.
Well, that, I was gonna get to that.
People should develop lots or dwelling units, affordable dwelling units on the projects that they're creating.
Well, yeah, the inclusionary zoning is part of Article Four now, and it will continue to be part of Article Four, and. Uh, my draft of changes was really to only to incorporate. What we did with the harbor project was basically set, you know. We have three choices how people meet it. They do it onsite, they do it offsite, or they do it by a payment in lieu. And right now, our payment in lieu provision doesn't have any firm guidelines of what that payment should be.
It does have guidelines, Tom.
Some, but.
It definitely has, has guidelines based on.
The, the, the point of the inclusionary zoning is my proposal at the moment just is ordering, you know, that, in, in making a statement of preference. On-site first, off-site second.
We could have a statement of preference, that's okay.
Yeah, that, well, that's all it is. That's all it is, and the, and the focus is, the focus with inclusionary zoning has always been on these. Multi-family developments in the village and what's gonna be coming on three A. You know, because we don't see a lot of subdivision work these days, but yes, we do have to address. The subdivision of five lots or more and how we're gonna do that, um. But that'll all be part of it, but right now, we're focusing, the judge is focusing on the. You know, the meats and bone, the meat and bones of, of, uh, Article Four, and then the other things that'll have to come into it or.
Well, well, you know, just to, just to repeat, um, she's not really changing any of the meat or the potatoes, uh, she's simplifying.
Correct, yeah, and that's always been the focus.
Insistent with, um, normal, um, practices or best practices.
Yeah, yeah, and that's always been the focus from day one, from the working group to the bylaw committee is to try to simplify. Article Four in, uh, the table in Article Four, so. Um, Kevin and Deirdre, any thoughts, comments on the approach or? You know, and, and what I intend to do again is keep you up to date on this. If we are gonna meet in August, that's probably another target. Cause we'll be further along in this work and some other things we're doing. Um, but I just don't wanna leave it all to the end to our statutory hearing in October, so. Um, if any thoughts or questions, feel free.
I, I don't have any questions. I, I think it's a good process rather than trying to do everything at once, so I think what's. Been put together so far is a good process for us to see where, um, we land. I think that. You have, you said, I'm sorry, Tom, you said you have another meeting in. This month or in August?
No, yeah, the bylaw, the bylaw committee is meeting the thirty-first. Um, we will then, then we will set our August meetings, um. I don't know what the select board did last night with the scheduling of town meeting. I don't know if anybody knows, but. You know, on the assumption it's early December like it has been, you know, these bylaws gotta be pretty much ready to go by the end of September. So that, and then we can go through the vetting process. Um, and by the way, the bylaw committee now has a member of the zoning board on it, so that will help. You know, again, keeping the zoning board up to speed on this as we go along, rather than getting their input at the last minute, so, uh. A- and on that regard, we're keeping the selectmen up to speed, and there was a meeting last, we, we met with them last month. To go over some of their goals and objectives and how it affected the zoning bylaw. And last night, they had a follow-up on it that thankfully Jack told me about, cause I wasn't aware of it. And one of the interesting things, uh, we discussed ADUs, and we're gonna wait on the surveys that are out there, and we should have the survey results by. The end of this month. Um, but they said that their two priorities were parking and. An impact fee bylaw. Now, the other night, on Monday night, at the bylaw committee meeting, we were working on an impact fee bylaw. Dave Farag on the committee has been researching other towns and.
I guess Hanover has a, has a good one.
Who's that?
I said Hanover has a good.
Yeah, no, he's, he looked at Hanover and Citroen, I pointed him in Franklin's direction, but Hanover is, is probably the best one around here. But anyway, the judge had talked to us about putting that off until the spring, but the selectman last night. Kind of sworn it back to being a higher priority. Their other issue about parking was obviously what goes on in the village and the harbor and. Um, you know, I tried to emphasize to them that every new multi, you know, mu- mixed-use project in the village of late. Including the hotel. Uh, the Red Lion has had parking on site. And I tried to emphasize in that what's driving it is the hospitality businesses. They're, you know, when I was down there last Saturday at six in Clinton Park. I had to go out to the satellite lot on Pleasant Street, and the streets were all. You know, so then, it was brought up though that perhaps the parking for one pleasant wasn't sufficient. That there are residents of the James Lane condos that use the town lots. If we have anything less than one space per bedroom. That's not good enough, so I, to the extent we have like one and a half per unit, um. Now, they want us to clearly go in the direction of two units, uh, you know, two, a, a space per bedroom. Um, they want, you know, and I assured them that, you know, going forward, harbor or village, we're going, we're three A, well, three A's. Got room for lots, but harbor or village, we're gonna make sure projects do it onsite. I told them that. You know, the two projects in the harbor have onsite parking that they're required to do, but, you know. And I tried to emphasize to them the difference between having the physical space to do it, which is not a bylaw issue. Uh, and then dealing with the bylaw, so when we talked about studying it to make sure our. Parking requirements per use are up to snuff, they basically kind of said, you don't need to study that, and if, if the state of the art. Is less, you know, forget the state of the art, do what we need to do, so. They do want us to take a look at all of our parking rigs. Uh, for the village and the harbor especially, well, that, essentially, that's all we have to look at.
Hey, hey, Tom, M, M.
They made, they made that a giant, they made that a giant priority. I'm sorry, they made it a giant priority last night.
M A P C has done at least one study of parking in the village. Um, Mike Sardina, who was on the Elm Street Corridor Study Group. Uh, also did, uh, uh, a, uh, without a, a real committee. Uh, an ad hoc study of, uh, ways to increase parking at the harbor. You know, obviously, it's kind of a seasonal issue.
Yep.
Um, and, um, because the Atlantica is under construction as a reconfiguration. We don't really know exactly how, um, that's gonna end up affecting, um, parking. But there, there's definitely ways to pick up parking at the harbor. Um.
Well, I'll tell you what.
I don't really think the government island, um, parking lot up, up above the Lightkeeper's House really helps. Particularly, other than for valet parking.
Right.
For restaurants, but, um, the, you know, the overall concept with the Elm Street redesign. Was to pick up as many parking spots as possible, given that the intersection of summer border. Uh, margin and Cove Streets, um, has a surplus of, of pavement. That could accommodate additional on-street parking that it doesn't currently pick up.
Yeah, and that, and that redesign, which I agreed with and was part of our planning board decision to suggest was. Doesn't seem to have favor with the select board at the moment, and, you know, so they, they.
Yeah, you know.
I don't wanna criticize them, that they're kind of at cross purposes, they, you know, there's an opportunity for them to look for some more spaces, and they don't wanna take it. But, uh.
Well, the Elm Street Corridor redesign was a kind of multipurpose, uh, redesign.
Yeah, it's great.
A connection between the village and the harbor, but like I said, also picking up as many parking spots as possible. And reducing the, the, the giant sweeps of, of, uh, of pavement for, for cars.
Yeah. So, you know, and I mentioned. I mentioned to them in the harbor how the one project has got a one-year lease. For satellite parking for their employees and their overflow. You know, but it is only one year. It's a temporary solution, but, you know. Creative valet-type solutions and, and I told them, I said, in the village too, in the village on the harbor, employee parking is part of the problem. They have to go somewhere too. Um, so, so anyway, the, the point of me bringing it, the point of me bringing it up is that they, they made that. They, they tried to im- impress upon the bylaw committee last night that that should be a very high priority, and we gotta look at our numbers.
Tom, in the past, the planning board has, uh, uh, sent, sent a letter to, to, um. I think it's the, uh, the, um, downtown business owners. Organization about, uh, requiring their employees to park in the satellite lot on Pleasant Street.
Yeah.
There's no real enforcement that's possible there, but. A reminder on a regular basis, especially during peak times. It doesn't really matter in February, right? But it does matter in July, August, September.
Yeah, I, 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 there, there was some select person last night who did mention the words meters and ticketing, so, you know. Enforcement isn't about, enforcement's in the back of the, Kevin, again, I don't, Kevin, I don't mean to ignore you. I see your hand up. Go, go jump in.
Yeah, was it, was this draft emailed? I didn't set eyes on it, and I checked, and I didn't see anything coming in after June twenty-first.
What, these use regulations?
Yeah, the draft use regulations, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I emailed it out on, I think, Monday morning.
Okay, maybe it's in a junk box or something. Um, you, you said that the, there were some broad categories. Um, I just, not having set a, any eyes on it, I'm curious as to whether there's a broad category for like, um. Um, green energy, um, you know, apparatuses associated with them, whether they're turbines or standalone photovoltaic. Um, apparatuses, that type of thing.
Yeah, so the, the, the judges emphasized to us that. Um. Solar uses need to be addressed in your use article. And so that's a big, that's a change that we have to take it basically out of Article Twenty. And move it into Article Four, and she said that the AG's office is getting to the point that they'll reject entire bylaw changes. If the solar stuff isn't to their satisfaction, so she's got her finger on that and the changes we need to make. And when we, when she gets to the draft table, you'll see that. Separate from this Article Four process, and again, Dave Farag on the committee is quarterbacking this. We're working with the Alternative Energy Committee on any, any reforms. They'd like to see an Articles nineteen, which is wind, and Article Twenty, which is solar. Um, I have made some suggestions. I'm asking for their suggestions. Article nineteen and twenty, again, the selectman last night said, well, that's not high priority, and I get it, but it's low-hanging fruit that we can deal with in the fall. But definitely solar and the uses of solar and expanding the uses of solar is something that. We have to do as part of this Article Four change, because the AG is hot to trot on the issue.
Okay, great. I'm, I'm glad to hear all that, Tom, and I just wanna expand the conversation for your purposes and for others. That solar isn't just a roof application these days, and I'm not talking about large areas where someone puts it across a former landfill. In a fixed, uh, grid and surface pattern. There are standalone, um, systems that actually track. The, uh, movement of the, the sun across the sky, and, you know, you, you may have seen those in other, um, states. Um, where, um. You know, someone may wanna position those on their parcel, and it may. You know, be considered others like, like a structure, cause it really is. It's something that's typically pole-mounted. It has a motor on it.
Yeah.
Follows the atmosphere of the sun across the sky. Okay, well, that's great.
Yeah, we're talking about, yeah, there's, if you, you know, when you, when I go to my office down River Street in Norwell. There is a large, it's a large piece of property, but there is a standalone array serving an individual house. It doesn't rotate, it's a big rectangular, but it's a structure, and so we have to make sure, um, you know, the right. Regulations of height, setback, that kind of stuff, but we are, one, one of the focuses of the changes I propose. To the Alternative Energy Committee on both nineteen and twenty is that both of them only regulate. And allow large-scale projects, large-scale turbines, large-scale solar arrays. We allow solar arrays on roofs, but we actually don't permit it in the bylaw, and that's an easy thing to correct, but. The, and then I also propose that we allow for, um, you know, a small turbine on the top of a roof. Um, for an individual housing, like, for example, I can't, supposedly, I'm told I can't do solar, cause there's too many trees. But I certainly get wind, and I could have a little turbine on my roof. But, so, so, we are trying, we're, we're trying to focus the Alternative Energy Committee on broadening the reach of what. Both nineteen and twenty are just for very large projects, and they're also very restricted as to where they can go in town. And we are trying to get them to think about broadening it as we look forward. Um, other climate change-related initiatives, there's multiple committees working on that right now. Those aren't gonna be ready until the spring earliest, but, uh, we are focusing on wind and solar, targeting it for the fall, and we'll see what we come up with. But, uh.
Okay, I, I, I would just encourage your groups, it sounds like you are, to keep an open mind on this stuff. The reality with those wind turbines on a, on residential small applications is they're not cost-effective, and they won't be anytime soon. Just for what it's worth, but for non-roof applications of solar with maybe smaller arrays. But the array actually faces the sun throughout the whole day, as opposed to the day when the sun's just at its apex across from it, when it's. Properly positioned on a fixed roof setup, those are actually making more of an application on a residential setting, so. Um, ways that those can be incorporated into what we're doing here, and in an acceptable fashion, and maybe in an encouraging fashion. Um, that's acceptable to what our goals are and the neighborhood goals and the people this town are, and the state needs to be factored in. So, leave it at that.
Yeah, okay, now, it's good, and this, this is the kind of thing I wanna have feedback as we go along and not have, you know. Not show up in October with finished bylaws, and then everybody says, oh, what about this one, about that, so.
Tom, I, I had, I did a presentation on, uh, sustainable design approaches as well as, um, the, the landscape of. Um. Um. Grants and, uh, th- this kind of state-of-the-art for, um. Sustainable design, including, which includes, um, you know, mainstream solar panels. You know, the reality is, some of the solar panels, the expensive ones can look okay. The cheap ones don't really look that good. Uh, but I had suggested that, um, perhaps there's a zoning relief, uh, aspect to being able to locate. Solar panels for the maximum, um, uh, solar advantage that, um, we should consider. Uh, instead of just, uh, rooftop, you know, southeast, southwest. South-facing, uh, areas, there, there may be opportunities on, on fencing or, or sidewalls, um. Uh, that can, uh, generate not, um. Maximum solar output, but, you know, in the, in the seventy to eighty percent that allows. Houses or homeowners to, to get close to net zero on their electrical bills. And, and I don't know exactly what that process might be. I suppose, you know, you could just spit it to the, to the zoning board of appeals. For, hey, does this, does this, uh, maximum solar project, does it look okay to the next-door neighbor? Is it gonna be, is it gonna be, um, bad for the neighborhood?
Yeah.
Um, and, and it's sort of hard to envision this stuff until you have a, a full-scale model and something to react to. Like, you know, it looks good if, if it, when you see it, you don't know if it's gonna look good if you see it on paper and.
Yeah.
The kind of thing that we do, uh, for review.
The one in Nor- the one in Norwell is visible from River Street, cause it's in a side yard, but it's a giant side yard. It's like a double lot, so it's got all the setbacks that you could want from neighbors. You see it driving by, is it, is it obnoxious? Is it intrusive? You know, not to me, but. I see worse fences and barns than I see, you know, in, in collapse and disarray on the road, so.
One, one thing that might make.
You know, you gotta have the right property.
Catalog the types of, uh, solar installations that, that might, um. Benefit homeowners in terms of their solar output and, and, and find ways to encourage those. That don't require a special permit or a variance or, 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 or something like that. Um, and, and the ones that, the manner of installing panels that might, might be objectionable. Perhaps that ends up being a review-type process.
Yeah. Well, right now, that's, you know, we don't wanna, we have all these committees and I, you know, just to sub out the workload. Dave is getting the Alternative Energy Committee to focus on these issues, and hopefully they do and come up with some recommendations, um. You know, at least in the fall, we will do the bare, the bare minimum solar requirements that we have to do in Article Four. But whether we do more is kind of up to them at the moment, but, uh. Again, last, last night, the reception was from the select board that it's not the highest priority on the planet, but, uh, I don't think it is, but. Anyway, we will see, um. So, yeah, Kevin, take a look at it. I mean, we're not done, you know, having your guy, this board's input on what bylaw committee is up to. I would hope by our August meeting, we will be much further along on what Article Four and its table will look like. Um, and then we will also have survey results. Um. We sent out surveys to ask about ADUs. We asked about zoning in the harbor. And we asked about short-term rentals, and I think we asked some things about housing choice, but that housing, housing choice is gonna be downward. You know, dealing with that legislation.
Hey, hey, Tom, generally, I don't fill out the, uh, surveys that, uh, we, we generate. Cause, you know, I don't, I don't wanna tip the scales, cause I know too much. Um, on the other hand, um. You know, I mean, maybe, maybe the, uh, committees and boards, uh, should be flagged as a, as. To get their opinions on these things.
Yeah.
In addition to the general population.
The select board, yeah.
I don't think that hurts, and, and the boards and committees are, are, um, sort of vested in positive outcomes. Perhaps, um, a reminder could be sent out to all the chairman.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll do that. The select board mentioned it last night amongst themselves to all fill it out, and it's put out weekly.
Well, you think we should, we should fill it out?
Yeah, I, I, I. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna get to it this week because of this thing I'm dealing with Friday, but.
No, but have you, have you filled out the surveys yourself personally?
No, I haven't.
Are you, do you intend to? Should, do you recommend that the board do that?
I would recommend that the members of the planning board do, yeah. I don't have a problem with that. I'm not doing it, cause I wrote them, and I know what my position is on that, and I'll just say so in the committee meetings, but, uh. Uh, I'm kind of really looking for a gauge of what other people in the town say, and. Uh, Justin told me last week, Justin told me last week, and I told this to the select board, that we're kind of in the neighborhood of a hundred. It was a little less than a hundred responses on all of them, and, um, that's why he wanted to put it out this past weekend. He puts it out, he announces it in the weekly report that he puts out, and it is on the top of the town webpage, but, um. Um, you know, I told him, well, you know, we need to work, move, get moving on this and see some results, so. You know, probably this Friday, it'll get announced again, probably next Friday, and then hopefully for the bylaw committee's meeting on the thirty-first, we'll have some. Results, and, you know, if we get a little over a hundred responses, that's, it's not great, but it's for, as I said, it's not bad based on past surveys. But, you know, we'll see, we'll see, but, you know, we talked about the selectmen are, they're hot to trot on. But, you know, we'll see, we'll see, but, you know, we talked about the selectmen are, they're hot to trot on ADUs too. I think there's a general consensus to not kill the use certainly. But it may be even to expand the availability of, uh, the use of ADUs, um. So we'll see how the, the public, you know, that's something we've talked about in the committee as Clark knows quite a bit, so, uh.
We haven't gotten into any like specific language on how we can fix the ADU. Or, uh, do we change over to a model, um, uh, bylaw?
And just for the benefit of the rest of the committee, uh, you know, the ADU bylaw has been there for, I don't know, fifteen years. It does not get a lot of applications, if any.
Well, it was killed initially just before town meeting where they, the, I think it was the planning board at the time said. We don't want any changes to the exterior of a building to accommodate these ADUs. And that is, I can say as an architect is nearly impossible to.
Right, right.
Without any changes to the outside.
Right, and, and so for a long time, uh, there have been people who. Don't want, it's, it's a pretty much a simple one-sentence change to fix that problem because one of the select. One of the select persons last, one of the select persons last night talked about, you know, adding to the house to create an ADU. And I said, well, no, you can't do that under the current bylaw because it says, don't change the exterior of that.
Why it's broken.
Right, and so that part can be fixed. The other issue that is for the rest of the committee that we're talking about is. Do we allow an ADU to be created in a detached structure on the property like over a garage or shed? Or, you know, even building a new little tiny shed. The square footage limit is nine hundred square feet and the house, if it's built in the house, the house has to be at least twelve hundred square feet. Um, one of the select board questioned whether nine hundred was too small and I said, well, I don't know. I, I said, you know, it is, in the village, we, the minimum is seven fifty. I mean, nine hundred, we consider. Fairly decent, but that I think was at a point in the discussion where they were confusing ADUs, which is really supposed to be owner-occupied versus. You know, renting something on the open market. And I said, well, that's a different definition, a different thing, uh. So, you know.
Was to, to create a, a new unit so that seniors could stay in their homes. Uh, and the income potentially would be, uh, what they'd use to, to stay in their, in their property, not. They would stay in their, in their new ADU and rent out their big house. But both were seen as a benefit to seniors to stay in Cohasset.
Right, and they, they agree with that thought, but I, I, you know, I said to them, you know, the intent of this i- isn't. And wasn't then and isn't now to, you know, create another, a second two, three-bedroom. Structure on the property. That's not what the intent is, but, uh.
Well, generally, an ADU is a de minimis additional unit that's smaller scale. I think the nine hundred square feet is, is okay.
Yeah, I think it's, well, yeah, that's perfect. Well, we'll get more feedback from them when we actually have the changes to that bylaw.
Apparently in places around LA and Southern California, uh, where ADUs have been mainstream zoning-wise. Um, the ADUs permits exceed the new house construction. It's the largest type of permit on a residential, um, as a residential type. That they're experiencing in, in those counties, cities and towns. That's where they find growth.
All right, I want to get everybody out of here. Anybody else have any thoughts, questions?
That's interesting, Clark.
It is interesting, Clark. It's very interesting that it's the biggest thing, actually. I, I still think we're going to see more about this tiny house movement.
And we have in our ADU language, uh, serious constraints to the number that can be created on an annual basis. And in total, so if we did change that one word, um, you know, can change the exterior appearance. We still aren't going to see a whole lot of them. I mean, there might be ten applications in in a month when, when that change tha- that happens, but. But they, they won't get it approved and there's a, a maximum upset. Controls the thing.
Well, we have to look at all of that. And then there's the other issue that things of like, what constrains me from doing it is the septic system, so. Which is not.
New septic system, Tom.
Yeah, that's higher my priority. I have the original system. It's fifty-three years old. Um, anyway, any, so, um, I'll bring you up to date again as we go along on things. And, and after, you know, by our August meeting, we'll have the survey results in, we'll be further along on the development of Article four and I'll bring you up to date on that. Um, so unless there's anything else that somebody wants to focus the bylaw committee on. You know, like I said, the selectmen as the policymakers in the town focused us on two priorities last night, um.
Just a quick, quick comment, Tom. I, I would say anything that's operative or content-wise. Um, like the change in language of the ADUs or increasing frontage or lot area or, or, or prescriptive. Um, types of approaches to zoning or restrictive types of, uh, approaches to zoning. I think it makes sense to, to get them on the table, talk about them exhaustively early, look at examples. And, and, and really have a, have a good sense of what's being kicked around. And, and not hold over till the, to the public hearing process at the end.
That's why we're here tonight. So that's why I'm taking up your summer night when we otherwise had nothing to do, so. All right, um.
Tom, I just did one more thing to bring up. And that, the housing choice, uh, opportunity or burden, depending on how you look at it. Um, we have a consultant that, um, is meeting tomorrow, is that it? Um, who's going to help us get a handle on, uh, what the requirements are. How the requirements may change over the next eighteen months, um, when compliance is expected. And, um, we think that's going to be pretty useful. I, I, uh, had as a related concept. Um, wondered what the status of the three A North Corridor redesign is. Cause we did a corridor study twelve years ago or so. And then the state decided on their own to do a corridor redesign for three A South. We desperately need, uh, connectivity to our train station. And I wondered that if we could advance the three A North, um, corridor redesign. And we rezone some of these parcels that are for housing choice. Would it be possible to link those so that we can get the work paid for? Um, uh, it, as a part of mitigation of these, of these, um. Uh, additional housing units. I mean, it, it seems like if the state wants us to do this, that's great. We should try to be in a position where, um, we can get infrastructure improvements, um, uh, done as a. As a part of it. I mean, you know, if you're, if you're taking a parcel that's currently worth five hundred thousand, let's, let's use. Um, the landscape supply place opposite the train station. If, if, if the land's worth five hundred thousand now, um, the zoning change for dense housing. Might make the parcel worth three to five million. You know, it could be a tenfold increase. If we're putting that much value in potential, uh, in current landowners', uh, pockets. Um, doesn't it make sense to, um, try and get the desperately needed infrastructure? Um, paid for as a part of that, as a su- very small component to their increase in, in equity. Uh, I think that's fair and, um. Uh, I, you know, I think we should keep talking about mass, the, the, the housing choice and the three A North at the same time.
Okay.
One, one other thought that I had, because I looked at a project recently that Georgia Tech did, um, that's a fifty thousand square foot. Uh, um, educational building that, um, generates twice the power that it needs. And, um, recycles, uh, its own, um. Uh, wastewater and uses only rainwater for, um, it's uses, it's, it's a pretty minimal kind of footprint, uh, prototype project. I'm not suggesting that, that we require that level of, um, sustainability. For, um, this, this new housing choice, but we could certainly, um. Uh, zone that at the same time with, as a net zero, um. Uh, net zero, uh, type of, um, sustainability requirement. Again, the state's saying they want us to increase by nineteen percent over some period of time. Wouldn't it be great to have textbook, um, sustainable projects? The infrastructure, um, that we desperately need in that location. As, uh, as a, as a local need kind of thing. Maybe, maybe other towns haven't thought about it yet, but, um, other towns might catch on that this is, um. If we're having, if we're having this housing choice shut down our throats.
Yeah, no, I don't disagree.
And why not, why not ask it, and, and it, it never hurts to ask, right? Cause you, you know, the powers that be could always say no, it makes it too complicated. But it, these sustainability and net zero is a hundred percent achievable right now. But you have to plan out the project to, at the onset, uh, with those goals in mind.
Okay, well, Cassandra, you and I, I'm going to try to make that thing tomorrow, but I can't promise it. Ten o'clock.
Yes, ten AM.
I'm not sure I'll make it, but I got it penciled in.
All right, um. All right, if, if there's nothing else, um, you have to run, I have to run. Um, we will see you on the twenty-sixth possibly. If this A and R comes in. Um, and that should be a brief meeting as well, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
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 And thanks, thanks for.
Thanks Cassandra.
Your attention, good stuff. Um, if you can make this thing ten o'clock tomorrow, if you're interested, ask Cassandra for the link and join in.
Great.
Yep, bye-bye.